Okay, Clark, tell me when we're ready.
Mayor Stevens, you're good to go.
Okay, okay, well, welcome everybody. I'm going to call our meeting to order 6:31, March 3rd. We're in March already, 2025. So before we get started, I just want to kind of set the stage for what we're going to try to accomplish tonight. As many of you may already recognize is that we have a very long agenda. We had to do that because there's many items that are timely and we had to put them on tonight's agenda, so apologize for that. Hopefully in the future, we will have more reasonable numbers of items on the agenda. For that reason, we're going to be very disciplined tonight about keeping our comments, those of us from the dice, our presenters. We're going to keep our comments very concise, very focused, and I'm going to ask that all of you do the same. For that reason, I just want to let everybody know that during public comment for tonight only, at least for tonight, maybe other meetings, we will be limiting public comment for everybody to one minute because we anticipate many, many comments tonight. So please keep your items, your comments very focused. I would just suggest do away with all the pleasantries, get to your point, let us know what you're thinking, we're going to listen to every single one. This is an attempt to make sure that everybody's voice is heard and that we get out of here at a relatively reasonable hour. Okay, so having said that, we're going to get started with our agenda. So can I ask city clerk for the roll call?
Councilmember Pacheco.
Present.
Councilmember Resendez.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Councilmember Deanda.
Here.
And Mayor Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Resendez, do you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney, do we have anything to report on last meeting's closed agenda items?
There was no reportable action.
Okay, let's move on to roll call.
Mayor Stevens, we've already taken.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I am trying to do three things at once, I apologize for that. So we're going to move on to special orders of the day, and this is a really, this is a really important part of a time when the city council gets to recognize the incredible work and contributions of groups to our community. And we have three very, very special groups that are represent, that are, we're recognizing today. One is Give Kids a Smile, the other is the American Red Cross in honor of American Red Cross Month, and then the other is Rare Disease Day. And so what I'm going to ask is those of you who are here to represent any one of those three groups, if, I'm going to ask you to just come to the front, I'm going to read your proclamations one at a time, and then you'll have a moment to make a comment if you'd like. So if you're here in the, in the chambers, can you please come up so that we can recognize you as I read the proclamations? And I'd like all three groups to come up. Okay, I believe one of our groups is not going to be represented in person today, but we're still going to recognize them. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the three proclamations. So first is Give Kids a Smile. So Give Kids a Smile was created by the American Dental Association as an initiative to give free dental care to children of underserved populations. The San Benito Health Foundation is a proud Give Kids a Smile partner and is committed to improving the health and dental services for our communities underserved. On behalf of the entire city council, I do hereby thank San Benito Health Foundation for their ongoing efforts and commitment to the Hollister community. So how about a round of applause for Give Kids a Smile? Okay, and the next group that we want to recognize is the American Red Cross in honor of American Red Cross Month. The proclamation for them reads, "During the month of March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month, recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Hollister and renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. The contributions of local Red Cross volunteers, 321 in the chapter, give hope to the, to the most vulnerable in our darkest hours. On behalf of the entire city council, I do hereby proclaim March 2025 as American Red Cross Month, and I encourage all citizens of Hollister to join in this commitment to strengthen our community and support its humanitarian mission." So let's give the American Red Cross. And thank them for their hard work. Thank you. And then finally, Rare Disease Day, the proclamation reads, "There are more than 10,000 known rare diseases and conditions in the United States. While each of these diseases may affect small numbers of people, rare diseases as a group affect an estimated 3 million Americans. Individuals and families affected by rare diseases often experience problems such as delays in obtaining an accurate diagnosis, difficulty finding a healthcare provider with expertise in their condition, and a lack of access to treatments or ancillary services. On behalf of the entire city council, I do hereby proclaim February 28th, 2025 to be Rare Disease Day in the city of Hollister." So let's give them a round of applause, please. So on behalf of the council, I want to thank you for your, all of your contributions to the community. And I'm going to open this up now to public comment, I'm just going to, and those of you that are here are welcome to give a public comment as well as anyone in the chambers. And remember that because of our tight agenda, we are going to limit comments to one minute each, but please feel free to make a public comment.
Mayor Stevens, I don't have any submitted speaker cards, so it's only the recipients.
Okay, so any one of you would like to come and make a comment about your organization, you're welcome to go up to the podium and make that.
Yeah, I just want to say that if something happens, we'll be there. We've been there for a long time. We're always, we're always here. You have a call. Thank you very much.
Hello there, my name is Julia Magda. I'm going to keep this brief, but three years ago, I suffered a hemorrhagic stroke triggered by a burst aneurysm triggered, but was ultimately the result of a very rare brain disease that I had that I didn't know I had until it almost killed me, called an arteriovenous malformation. And since then, I have tried, sorry, spreading awareness about this rare disease and all rare diseases in general. And yeah, starting with government as well, I have spoken to, to other governmental leaders, and I'm just trying to spread awareness about my rare disease and about all of them, I guess, but yeah, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for your courage and for your advocacy. I mean, I think everybody in the chambers can, will agree with me that you're very impressive, and we're so glad that you're here and you're advocating. You're an amazing advocate. Okay, so thank you to all three groups, very important work that all three groups are doing. So we're going to move on with a presentation by Hovenez de Antonio. So we're going to, this is going to be a brief presentation on their staff. So let's see, are we doing, are we doing public comment first or presentation first?
Typically, for the presentation.
Presentation, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I am Danny Barrera Jr., I'm the executive director for Hovenez de Antonio. I have, for the past 15 months today, have had the honor of leading our senior center and working with our staff and our volunteers, our board, and, oh, thank you, and making improvements for our seniors. And I just have a few slides here, I'm going to go through very quickly and just make some quick pointers. Yes, so Hovenez has been around for 50 years. We are now in our 50 years of celebrating services here in the city of Hollister, providing Meals on Wheels to our seniors, transportation services, and our senior lunch program. I wanted to give some history about our building, the building, the building was built in 1980 as the community rec center, and we have, Hovenez found a home there, and we made, we started, Pauline and her team had an office there, five of them worked in one little office, and they decided to raise their own money and build a whole other set of offices to expand our services that would allow us to be more effective in reaching our seniors. So Hovenez raised a lot of money and built a whole other wing of that building, which is the back part of the building, and those are the Hovenez offices that we run our programs and services for. Later on, after many years with Pauline, she served here on city council and even as mayor, I believe her term mayor was, she was on the council for 16 years. And is that correct? Is that 16 years on city council, serving here, advocating for our seniors? And we are so grateful for her leadership and, and the legacy that she's left behind. I'm honored that I have the opportunity to, to come up behind her, keep working and keep her mission going to serving our seniors. So when she passed, we renamed the building and dedicated in her, for her legacy, and so now it's called the Pauline Valdivia Memorial Community Center. And we're grateful for that opportunity, grateful for her legacy and the work that she left there, and the work that I get to continue with our staff and our volunteers. So passing, pass forward, I just wanted, oh, sorry, I have the clicker here, sorry. There we go, and I just wanted to share a quick reminder, picture, a wonderful picture of Pauline. I never had the honor of meeting her, but I wish that I did, I hear so many stories. I, I moved into her office and found all her notes and read through things, wow, what an amazing woman, what amazing life, and what an amazing team that I got to inherit. I love the staff and I appreciate their knowledge, their wisdom, their passion to serve our Some, some quick pointers here, Meals on Wheels, we serve about 150 clients every day, Monday through Friday. We have our senior lunch program that serves on average 60 to 80 seniors. When I got there, we were only serving 30, but now we're consistently serving 60 to 80. When we have our big events and luncheons, we're easy, easily at 100 plus in our dining room. Specialized transportation, we're providing services, we take seniors as far as the Stanford Medical Center, to medical appointments, to the grocery store here locally, to the pharmacy, to the bank, and a lot of seniors do rely on these services. Our exercises class, we've had to max it at 25 people, and it's been consistent every, we do it twice a week. We do about, we offer about 200 hours of respite care services where we, we help subsidize respite care hours, and that allows family members to go and take a break and, and pay for someone to come and, and take care of their loved one while they can go and have some self-care time. We have our help desk where seniors and family members can call for resources, and a lot of times the calls that we get are, hey, I'm worried a scammer has come and, and it's trying to take money from, from our seniors, and we can help identify those issues, and we have many times. A computer class is another great resource that we had. I wanted to share some of the pictures of our seniors, we serve everyone, and these are some of the most wonderful people that you meet, they're so welcoming in our center. Some more, these are real, these are not paid actors, these are real people in our center every day. I love them, and they have been so good to us. These are some of our vehicles, these are some of the local grants this year that we received, and we're grateful for their partnership, including the city. Our lunch program and our specialized transportation services are two biggest programs, and our Meals on Wheels. And my big question is asking for support for funding, we have to do matching grants that allow us to maintain our state and federal funds, and we're asking for $10,000 to $20,000 to meet our matching grants to support our programs. And one final thing I'm going to ask, if you just give me just a moment, is that in our 50th anniversary, May 5th is our anniversary, and we were wondering if, hoping that the city might be willing to offer a proclamation for the great work that we're doing there at Hovenez for the staff and the volunteers and recognizing our senior center. And again, in August 21st, National Senior Citizens Day, we'd really like to continue pushing that, recognizing that day with another proclamation to recognize our senior citizens here in San Benito County and in the city limits. Thank you so much, I apologize for my rush, and I thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for the brief and very enriching presentation. So let me check with our city clerk to see if we have any comments following this presentation.
Yes, Mayor Stevens, we have, we have three speakers for this item. Do you want to go ahead and take those public comments right now?
Yes.
Okay, Elvira Robinson to be followed by Hiladria Nardi.
Good evening, I'm an attorney here, and more importantly, I'm a senior. And I've been at the senior center from time to time, and I see all the tremendous work that they do there, and I see them exercise, or as I see everyone eat at a reasonable rate. You know how expensive it is to eat in a restaurant, and this facility just is able to feed people at a reasonable rate. And Meals on Wheels is incredible, the, the transportation program also incredible. I've worked with Danny, I've volunteered to review some things for him, and I've seen his work, his work ethic, and it's outstanding. And I'm here to support the senior center, and I hope to see more legal assistance there in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson.
The next speaker is Hiladria Nardi to be followed by Peter Saracino, Saracino, sorry.
I'm Hiladria Nardi, and I just want to say a word for the organization, los hovens de Antonio. I have used their transportation services to go for medical appointments, and I, I think it's a great service. It's, you get picked up at home, and you're driven to Palo Alto, no matter how much traffic there is. And the, the people, the drivers are all experienced people, and they know how long it's going to take them, so they, they schedule so that we will be there on time for the On the way back, they get in touch with the service provider in Palo Alto, and they, they know what time I will be picked up, how, what time I will be ready to be picked up. And the driver will be there on time. Anyway, they're great, and it's very reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Peter Saracino to be followed by Maria Spandri.
Hello, I'm Peter Saracino, and I'm a retired educator. And I retired in 2020, a technology teacher, and I was looking for something to do, I was really bored, and somebody told me, hey, there's this free exercise class, you can go down to senior center by the Parks and Rec, and started the exercise class, had a good time, then all of a sudden I discovered I could eat lunch there and, and play bingo. And so I went there and, and started eating lunch there and playing bingo every day. And then pretty soon I was volunteering, I was calling bingo and, and just having a good time. And then, and then I ended up going to the exercise class, then I ended up being on the board of directors, and now I'm, I'm helping, doing what I can to help Danny just improve this place and our services. And also, I teach a computer class for seniors there for, as part of my volunteering, and you know, it's computer literacy, don't be afraid of your computer, and it's, you know, and they love it. And also, only thing I want to say is, it's also more about food and exercise, I made a lot of friends there.
Thank you, sir.
Oldest one being 103 years old.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, can I just do a quick little timeout? I, I know that we have a lot of enthusiasm, I appreciate that, and I'm going to ask that if we can just hold off on the applause, and I ask that only because we just want to make sure that we can listen to every speaker and get everybody in and, and keep within an efficient amount of time for tonight. So thank you all for your enthusiasm and your applause, and I'm going to ask if you can just hold off on the applause for that. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Maria Spandri to be followed by Joe.
Hi, my name is Maria Spandri, Mayor, thank you, city council, all, thank you for letting me speak before you. So one of the things that everybody's talking about, what everybody's forgetting, this is about dignity, they're giving them a place to go and have dignity, and they're the forgotten ones. Meals on Wheels is just not about food, Meals on Wheels is about a check-in. It's just like what we do if, for our veterans dinners, is like if somebody's not getting back to us, I know something's going on, and that's what this program is about, it's about giving them dignity, giving them what everybody else gets because their families are busy and they're alone, and so this gives them dignity. And so by having this program succeed, that's what we need, it's the quiet group in town that doesn't complain. When we did our blanket drive, I got a letter from one of the seniors, and it just made me cry because he said, thank you, because I can't afford heat, and so that just broke my heart. So we're going to do socks for seniors and blankets again, but I just, I just want you to know, this is about dignity, it's about the right of having people check in on you and giving them a moment.
Thank you.
So please consider them.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe.
Good evening, city council, I just want to say that while, while the one-minute comment period is very short, and it may have come through, this may have some folks around here, I would like to remind everybody that there is, there is social media, I mean, that's, that's not quite the same thing, but it is, it is a tool that's very, that is useful, we can, you know, we can also call and, call and email and all that, and meet with our, with our city council folks. And I mean personally, I don't feel, I, I personally don't feel like that's sufficient, but it, it can sometimes be the, be the best, you know, a good second option, especially social media, because social media is free, it's convenient.
Are you going to speak on the presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought this was for non-agenda.
Oh, no, sorry, we're not there yet.
Excuse me, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Those are the public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, we just had someone raise their hand, Mayor Stevens, Jonathan Casey.
Jonathan Casey.
He's on Zoom.
Oh, oh, sorry about that, go ahead, John, Mr. Casey.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
I, I just want to say I've, I've dedicated a lot of my life in the last 20 or so years to seniors, and Meals on Wheels and the senior centers are so critical to folks that, for a lot of them, this is their only interaction in, in the world. And the Meals on Wheels folks are more than just delivering meals, they, they provide social work, they provide companionship, they provide someone to talk to, even if it's for that, you know, few minutes that they're there delivering meals. It's, it's critically important that we understand how important that is to these seniors. I, I just wanted to add that as a, as a financial expert in the field, there is, there's so much to be done to help these people and make sure that these programs stay out there and effective, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Those are all the public comments.
Okay, thank you, so thank you for that great presentation, and let me just check in with my fellow council members, do you have a question, a comment, question?
Just like to say, I'll be way less than a minute, you know, I thought I knew what Hovenez de Antonio did, but I didn't know the half of it. I mean, seniors events, mixers, activities, I mean, quality of life activities for those in our community with the most life experience is incredible. And if you're in this community of Hollister, I'd like to call to action, if you've got a couple of bucks, a couple of nickels to rub together, seems like a great opportunity to do something good and feel good about it. So if you've got like a couple of bucks, give what you can, I didn't know a half of it, I'm really proud of what you guys are doing, so I'd like to see you keep it up. And if you have a couple of bucks, seems like a good place, place to invest it and feel good about it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, not hearing any, and let me just thank you again for that great presentation, and we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and this is where, Joe, this will be the time. So this is a time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name, and city for the records, and speak to the city council. If you are joining us on Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you are joining us via Zoom using a cell phone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to one minute, and we'll, we'll have a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. And then just one other thing that I'm going to add again, in, in an effort to be more efficient tonight and to stay focused and keep us moving along, I am going to close the, a time for turning in your cards after the first speaker of each agenda item, so if we, if you need to get a card in, then please try to get it in as soon as possible for any item on the agenda tonight. Okay, so clerk, do we have any public comments for this part of the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Stevens, currently we have seven speakers. The first speaker is Jennifer Cole to be followed by Robert Harmson.
So what did we learn from the recent fires in Los Angeles and Moss Landing? For me, it's, was a reminder that accurate and timely public information is critical, especially about dangerous conditions, safe evacuation routes, and the timing of actions to avoid harm. I am here to ask if the city of Hollister provides emergency information in indigenous languages of Mexico and Guatemala, and if so, which ones? I don't believe we should rely on a six-year-old family member who has learned some Spanish to be able to translate lithium battery toxic smoke from Spanish into, say, misteco or triqui. I have a brilliant three-minute thing that I rehearsed how many times, I will give copies to the city clerk, so let me just sum up that I am requesting the city of Hollister seek to support the indigenous members of our community by offering information and help in their language.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
The next speaker is Robert, Robert Harmson to be followed by John Rovels.
Well, you have a very busy schedule, so I'd be very brief.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Harmson, retired lawyer. I was chairman of Citizens Against Airport Pollution for a million years. We litigated with the city of San Jose relating to negative environmental impacts for large numbers of people. We still have a curfew as a result of our organization's effort, many, many years, lots of court appearances, I just, my purpose is to let you know, you have an airport, it's an important resource, but you have to be very careful about what you do there because the FAA will have strings attached to any money they give you for any purpose, and those strings- And those strings can impact what you can do later environmentally. So, my message is, just be very careful when you deal with the airport. And you have other important, more important things than that. So, I just, that's my message.
Thank you, Mr. Harmson.
The next speaker is John Robles to be followed by Gillian Wilson.
Good evening, council members. On November 5th of last year, the voters spoke swiftly, decisively, and in no uncertain terms that they had had enough of the city council in which four of its five members were generally ignorant to the will of the people, favoring developers and other outside interests, other, outside of the needs of the people. Mayor, your predecessor has left you with the equivalent of a burning bag of dog poo. As you are very well aware, you have your work cut out for you. You should understand that the vast majority of voters are behind you, and you, and you, and you. With respect to carrying out the will of the voters, it's go time. It's go time. That's all I have, have a good night.
Thanks, Mr. Robles.
The next speaker is Gillian Wilson to be followed by Megan.
Hello, I'm Gillian Wilson. I'm here tonight in support of small local businesses, which are the heart of our community. I'm not a business owner myself, but as a resident of Hollister, I am deeply invested in this community. And I want to spend my money here. I don't want to have to travel outside of my own community or shop online because there aren't any options in my own town. I support local businesses here, and I'd love to see more variety in the retail stores, services, and restaurants in town. I'm not here to blame this council, the current council, or the previous council, because if you've lived in Hollister for any amount of time, you know that this is a chronic and persistent problem going back decades. I'm not here to point fingers, I'm here to find solutions so we can move forward in a positive manner that supports local businesses. Sorry, I had to cut some of my speech. So, this is in reference to Calabria Coffee closing and into, and reference to other businesses that I've talked to who had trouble with the permitting process. I'd like that to be resolved, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Megan to be followed by Joe. Megan.
Hi, thank you, same subject. My name is Megan Nico, I live in Pisinas. Hollister is the closest community where I can do my shopping, where I can do my shopping. I don't do a lot of my shopping here because I prefer to, you know, support independent businesses. And, you know, I buy directly from farmers when I can, so in the county as much as I can. But I don't get to do a lot of what I want to do here in Hollister. And I don't know why that is, right? I don't know why, as one of the fastest-growing cities in the state, why it's so hard for independent businesses to thrive here. I don't know why we have so many Starbucks and so few independent coffee shops, right? I don't know why the only bookstore in the county is open under a temporary permit when we haven't had a bookstore here in town for 25 years. So, I'm just asking that you help our small businesses because that money stays in this community. And it is a circular, it's a closed system unlike outside businesses and big corporations. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe to be followed by Todd Dubois.
Hello, City Council. Continuing my erroneously timed speech from earlier, is that social media is a great tool for getting your, your thoughts heard. When I ran for Central Committee last, last, last year, I lost by only, by less than 1% using just social media. I had to get, get some help from some nice folks, but I did not spend a dime because that was kind of the point of my campaign personally. So, I really did it, you know, social media can be a very powerful way to get, to be heard. And again, I always, you know, I've always, like, for years now, too, actually, I've always emphasized the importance of being able to show up in a public environment in person and talk with your leaders. But if you only get a minute, you only get a minute. And I strongly recommend you guys make yourselves heard on Facebook or whatever social media you use to be heard because it's such a powerful and underrated tool. Also, small businesses are awesome, let's boycott the big ones because we want the small ones to compete too. Let's go. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Todd Dubois.
Good evening, Council, Todd Dubois. I have been in Hollister or involved in Hollister for 60 years, and I'm excited tonight that under Agenda Item 11.4, you'll consider.
Mayor, you'll reopen the comment period for that. This is regular comments for items not on the agenda.
Oh, I took closed agenda items, so I, you know.
You're still able to give public comment on a closed-session item, Mr. Dubois?
Right before a closed session.
Right before, oh, okay.
Yeah, so you can just reserve your time for that. Yeah, just come back, come back in a little bit. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dubois.
Those are all the public comments for the section.
Okay, thank you. So, we're gonna close that part of the agenda and then move on with the consent items. So, any members of council have any brief questions or comments on items from the consent agenda? Councilmember Resendas?
Thank you. I'm gonna wait to see if the public, many members of the public pulled anything. If not, I'd like to pull a couple of items. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So, I'm gonna, I, I, yeah, you have to put a card up for that, please.
We, we haven't gotten the public comments yet. So, we're just doing council items.
Mayor, you'll ask that in a minute. Right now, it's you directed your comments to the council, not to the public.
Okay, it's okay, thank, thank you. So, clerk, do we have any public comments on, on any of the consent items?
Yes, we have two speakers for the consent items. First is Carly Robles to be followed by Danny Barrera Jr.
Go ahead, Ms. Robles.
Okay, so I want to pull consent, consent, Agenda Item 7.6, 7.7, and 7.8. 7.6, Hollister's in a financial deficit already, and Morales wants to take a trip. I don't think that's necessary right now, I feel the council should discuss this. And 7.7, Councilmember Morales wants to use over $25,000 of her discretionary money to LULAC, which is a great organization. I wish we could give $50,000 to them, but I just don't think we have the money. I, maybe it can be used in a better way. And if she does want to give money to a foundation, maybe it can be the Latino Coalition also. And 7.8, again, we're in a deficit. I don't feel we should be giving $5,000 to United Way in two years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Danny Barrera Jr.
Yes, I just wanted to lend my support for 7.7 for LULAC. They are a wonderful group of people trying to make some good in the community. And I just want to be very simple and short about that. It's a great cause, and I fully support that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Those are all of the public speakers for all of the consent agenda items.
Okay, thank you. So, let's, do any members of the council have any items that they would like to pull?
So, I was just gonna honor the public's will to pull 7.6, 7.7, 7.8 is what I heard. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll pull those items. On those that are not being pulled, may I have a motion on the consent items?
Move to a top.
I will second that. Can we do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Pichet?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendas?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Councilmember, Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead then and, and consider the first-pulled Agenda Item, 7.6, a resolution authorizing Councilmember Morales to travel for the League of California Cities Policy Committee Meetings, March 27th through 28th, 2025, in Burbank, California. So, any comments? Councilmember Pichet?
You know, when it came to Homenes de Antonio, I was impressed at what I learned that you all are doing. Like I said, I didn't know the half of it, and it's so amazing what you all are doing. The oldest in our population with the most experience and the dignity in getting them to and from some of these appointments. I mean, Palo Alto's crazy to get to. You know, I feel strong, I think LULAC is another great organization. I'm struggling with item 7.7.
We're just, yeah, but we're just talking about 7.6 right now, sorry. Sorry about that, about the travel to Burbank for Councilmember Morales. Okay, we're gonna focus on that one first.
Got it.
Okay. Yeah, it's a little confusing, we have a lot going on, so I totally get it. So, if you want to hold off on that comment, that's, or, go ahead.
Well, with regard to that, I would just, I would just like to know, I mean, I, I feel strongly that we need a representation at the League of Cities, and it would be nice to have Hollister and potentially San Vito County represented. I'm just wondering, is there a way to do it electronically that doesn't involve the use of funds to get there? Because we just went through a budget, and I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can, we can do that through Zoom or Teams or something.
So, through the chair? I can give a little bit of background in terms of what this is?
Please go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
So, the California League of Cities represents or has representatives from the entire state. Every region, so San Benito or the city of Hollister is part of the Monterey region, which is composed of Santa Cruz, Monterey, and San Benito. So, all the cities that make up those three regions, they select representatives from those three regions to be part of committees that, that get together three times a year. Two are, must be in person, and one is done electronically. So, one that I went to here in Sacramento, I used my own funds for that. The other one is happening in Southern California, and that's to accommodate all the city representatives, and one is virtually. So, I was elected by a nomination committee from the Monterey region to be on the Public Safety Committee. So, public safety is a big issue in the state of California. The committee, the committee makes recommendations as to what should be priorities for the state to consider. So, these are, these are not, only a few folks get selected to be part of these policy committees at the state level. So, I was selected through a nomination committee to represent the Monterey region. So, if the city council's not, not, this isn't where I can, I can go virtually. This is something that is a high honor, that not a lot of people are selected, especially for the Public Safety Committee. It would be crucial for us to have representation for the Monterey region.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Question, Councilmember Resendas?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, is the city in a good financial position right now?
We gave a fiscal update a few meetings ago where we're showing that for the next budget year, we're going to be, the direction to staff was to reduce expenditures by 10% and revenue projections by 2.5%.
Right, so we directed essentially your staff in all departments to cut back by 10%?
That is correct.
Okay. And did we also tell you to implement a hiring freeze because of the budget deficit we're going?
Yes, I was given authority to have a hiring freeze where, depending on the position, I would make the ultimate decision, but we have been holding a majority of positions. So, they're just case by case, depending on the nature of the position.
All right, thank you. So, again, we just received a presentation from the city manager saying we're in deep financial trouble. We're cutting back, we're having our administration staff cut back by 10%, we're doing a hiring freeze, and we could potentially look at more cutbacks. This trip to Los Angeles is not something that's required, and I just think it sets really bad precedent. It's a bit of a slap in the face, if you ask me, not only to the staff that we're asking to cut back on their spending, but to the constituents that we represent. I do agree with Councilwoman Morales in that if she has such a passion to do this position that she was volunteered by, from, not by this, these people here, then she can use her own funds to do that. I'm perfectly okay with that. But, again, it's a slippery slope, and I've been here for a while, it's a slippery slope when we start allowing these trips and these giveaways. If we're not required to do it, we really have to pull back, and I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So, thank you all for coming out here, thank you for speaking, and I cannot support the council members' request to go to Los Angeles on a trip. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Resendas.
I'd like to respond to that.
Okay, so can you just keep it really brief? Thank you.
Yeah, of course. While I agree that our city's in a financial spot, this is within my budgeted allocation to travel, so I'm not going outside of that. The last trip that I was supposed to go on was denied, so I was the only one out of the, out of the five that was denied, and the four council members present here were able to go to the California League of Cities for the training. And so that was interesting because I was the only one that was denied, but yet four were approved to go. Also, you know, the city council made a conscious decision to hand over almost $11,000 a day because we're still not done with our fire contract. So, that is kind of the basis for why we're in such a financial difficulty. So, if the city council doesn't have a problem with giving away almost $11,000 a day, why would it have a problem allowing less than $2,000 or $1,000 for something that is essential to not only the city of Hollister, but the Monterey region? Not going over or not utilizing things that are outside of what's already been allocated for me to do my job? So, I, I think it's interesting. It would be interesting if the council approved their own trips and conferences, but would deny me to the exact same conferences.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Okay, so I, I think, I think we should move on to, like, to entertain a motions. We've had a comment on this.
Mayor Stevens.
Okay, a brief comment, please.
I'm just gonna give you a motion, motion to deny. Thank you.
Can we do a roll call vote?
We don't have a second for that.
You need a second. I'm sorry, second. I'm not seconding it, I'm asking for a second, I apologize. Okay, I'm not hearing a second, so.
Mayor Stevens?
Go ahead.
Thank you. If someone is not willing to second my motion and this motion passes, then I would say that we amend the language to allow the newly elected, the newly elected by the end of this night representative on the state level for the city of Hollister to attend that trip, not a specific council member. Is that clear? Do you understand my direction?
No, if you could repeat it.
By the end of the night, we're going to nominate a new...
The voting delegate?
Yeah, voting delegate. So, I would like to include the language to say the new voting delegate to go to this training if they choose to go. But again, I adamantly oppose this. Thank you.
Okay.
I just have one more thing.
Okay.
You know, I really think that it makes sense that we would have some representation in the League of Cities from Hollister at that meeting. And if it's, you spent your own money on one, and the other one was virtual, and this one's gotta be face-to-face, it just makes sense that you would go and, you know, represent your local area. So, that's really all I have to say about it.
And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just make one quick comment and then ask for another motion, if that's okay? I think it's, I think we've had time to make comment. I agree that we have to be very conservative with how we move forward fiscally. I have to concur with Councilmember Morales that this is something that was budgeted, she did miss out previously on some travel, and, and she has been the delegate for this. So, I'm, I'm okay with approving this travel since it was something that was already in motion. And then the next delegate that we elect would, then I would ask that they pick up there and then move forward from that position. But I do think that, I think it's, it's good for her to go since she has already put in part of the time and can speak for us on public safety. That's just my own opinion, so I'm just gonna make that comment and then move on for a motion. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I have motion to approve.
And I'll go ahead and second. Can we do a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Pichet?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendas?
No.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1 with Councilmember Resendez opposing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Thank you for that discussion and then we're gonna move on to 7.7. And the, the item is a resolution authorizing Councilmember Morales to use up to $25,650 of city council budgeted fiscal year 2425 discretionary funds for financial support of San Benito County League of United Latin American Citizens, also known as LULAC. So comments?
Can I give some background, please?
Oh, go ahead. Okay, let's start with Councilmember Morales and then we'll just come down to you.
So the Rapid Action Network is actually comprised of several trusted community-based organizations, the county of Santa Cruz, the county of Monterey, and some elements of the county of Santa Clara. This group got together because of the response of some of the immigration policies in terms of ICE. We have a large immigration community here in San Benito County. So the Rapid Action Response Network does not have any financial support currently from either Hollister or San Benito County. They are leveraging potential relationships with the county of Monterey to buy into their dashboard, which means that when they have a phone number, it goes into a dashboard. The dashboard would then disperse that information to train volunteers to pick up the phone and provide guidance. The city of Santa Cruz is also providing resources. The county of Santa Clara has offered to provide free of cost trainers, including Ruth from Santa Clara Law University to do some of the legal trainings as well. That's gonna be done this week. What they don't have is the ability to pay for the, to pay, to buy in to like the county of Monterey, to pay for the dashboard, for the phone number, for, for example, the startup cost to be able to just get the Rapid Action Network up and going. So this is a very small amount. Just to give you an idea, Santa Clara County is funding $15.15 million for the Rapid Action Network and support for their community-based organizations. There's a lot of intricacies that will go into this, such as what happens when ICE picks up parents and the children are left here. There's gonna be some work that needs to happen with the Consulado de México in order for the children to be sent back to Mexico or to be able to reunite with family members. So this is a tiny bit of monies for them to find like a volunteer coordinator or, or pay for fundraising, to help pay other trusted community-based organizations like Community Solutions, Youth Alliance, and pay for, for some of the infrastructure costs that they need in order for, for this work to happen. Without this funding, and this is part of my discretionary fund, that we will not have for the, probably for the next five years, they will not be able to move forward. They will not be able to, to lift up what we need. Every other jurisdiction has funded and actually started. Some started in 2017 and never let their guard down. So we are, without some type of support, our community will, will not have any, any community response to what will happen in the next several years.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, appreciate it. Do you have a comment?
I, I do. And I, before I spoke out of turn earlier, I, I was about to say, I'm struggling with this. There are 150 nonprofit groups in Hollister, some of them really small, some of them doing some great things, like Hovens. I believe on, on one hand, we've got LULAC, an organization that's doing great things. And again, like Hovens, I probably don't know the half of it. They do so much good stuff for the community. And this is within the confines of what the discretionary funds were, were meant for. On the other hand, we just went through the budget talk with the city staff and we're in, we're in tough times. And, you know, I'm sitting up here, a rookie on the dais, and I still see these numbers like $3.5 million for a roundabout and taking out a couple of lights. This is huge money, right? $30,000 is still, seems like a lot of money to me. A very good cause, a worthy cause, but $28,468 to me, just after we had that budget talk, I, I really, in my gut, I'm just, I'm kinda using my gut here, we need to be good stewards. These are still public funds. Like I said, we went through this budget talk recently and we're asking all departments to do some tightening of the belts. And I feel like we might need some fiscal conservatism regarding the entire of the council regarding these discretionary funds. I feel like $50,000 is quite a bit. $30,000 is still a lot. And I struggle with the idea of like government, like actually choosing winners and those who might not win certain funds when it comes to allocating these, these funds. So I just, I just struggle with this, this whole discretionary funds thing. At this time, where we don't have a lot of money, I think we might need to actually be more conservative.
Thank you, Councilmember Pachet. Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. I would like to hear from public comment and then I'll give some closing comments as well, but I do have questions. So, City Manager, when you started, the discretionary fund was what? Do you remember?
The discretionary fund policy, if I remember correctly, was adopted back, I wanna say, June of '23.
But do you remember the amount?
The amount was $50,000.
When you first started with us?
Yes, it was.
So this is what, this is initially how it started. I think there was maybe a few thousand dollars and it was supposed to be for road improvements, traffic studies. Then it was, I believe, $20,000. Then they opened it up to essentially being able to give money to anybody, anybody essentially, as long as they're nonprofit status, right? Then the previous council went against your direction and they doubled that to $50,000. Do you remember what my recommendation was when you had announced to us that we were having budget problems?
So if I remember correctly, it was $50,000 in the end of '23. We, we brought the policy forward, so there was some parameters around it that went through council. Council adopted the policy. For the next budget year, which was last budget year, or this budget year, I'm sorry, the recommendation was $20,000 and at, during the budget hearings, that number was increased back to $50,000.
So staff's recommendation was $20,000. The majority of this council increased it to 50. What was my ask? Do you remember?
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
Zero.
Okay.
Just so the public knows. Again, how much money has, after Dolores, or Councilmember Morales spends this money tonight, the $25,000 that she's asking for, how much will she have spent in her discretionary funds?
This would be the balance of funds.
Okay, so $50,000 altogether?
Correct.
And we're looking at revising that policy tonight?
That is correct.
Okay. Councilmember Resendez, do you have the number? I know I didn't prep you for that, but do you have the number of what I've spent?
I don't, but there was a handful of very small items. We had the Posadas and the Alters for Dia de los Muertos.
Okay, good. How much does she have in her account? Sorry, Councilmember Deanda?
She has no dollars in her account.
Why not? Did she spend those $50,000?
No. The, the funds of Councilmember Deanda, Councilmember Pachet, and Mayor Stevens were obligated prior to taking office for the fiscal budget year.
Okay, so the very last day that the people who doubled this, spent all the money and gave it to some of their nonprofit friends. This is a slippery slope. Did they not also double their traveling expenses?
So the travel expenses, not this year, the year before, went from $2,500 to $5,000. We did have a policy change a handful of months ago that took it to the mayor staying at $5,000, the remaining council members at $4,000, with that balance of $4,000 sitting out in a pool that if a council member wanted to draw from that pool, it would be part of the, the travel request.
And has Councilmember Morales ever gone over her travel budget allowance?
I believe in '22, '23, that was discussed.
Okay. So here's the thing, I'm gonna get to my point, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Slippery slope. It's not a small amount of money and it's not your money to give away. It's the people's money. We're telling our staff that we need to have them cut back. We're telling them that we're gonna do a hiring freeze. Yet we wanna send people to trips to LA and to give $50,000. Wait, before we consider even changing the policy tonight? No bueno. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Deanda. No comment. I'm gonna just ask a couple, I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions to Councilmember Morales. And I'm just gonna count this by saying that I do, I do hear what you say about like what other counties are paying for this, but obviously they have a lot more resources, right? So ours is always gonna be very, very small if, if ever. But here's my, here's my only concern. I, I think that it's going, it would go to a good cause, supporting what's happening with immigrants. I did get some various phone calls from the public about this. And the, the concern that came up a few times and I had not considered it when I was looking at the packet, the agenda packet. But the, the concern is that there is already a, a phone number that's out in the public that is, that, that we gave $1,500 from a request to Councilmember Resendez a few city council meetings before. And so my concern is that there's gonna be confusion about that. So that's one. So I was wondering if you could address that, that there, there will be two phone numbers that may cause confusion. And then secondly, is there any way to account for the, the cost that, how, how the money would be utilized? If the, this were to go through, like could we come back at a later date and say, this part was used for trading, this part was used for the phone, the, the phone number, this part was used for the work with Monterey County, this. So I'm just wondering if that is something that's, that's possible?
Yes.
And then, so if you can just check, ask, you know, just address those two things.
Yeah, so the way we've always done it is that providers or nonprofits have to provide receipts for their expenditures and so it's more of a reimbursement. So everything will be accounted for in terms of the phone number or whatever agreement is made with the county of Monterey for the dashboard, the training, hiring a person to, to take the phone calls at night. So those are the things that there can be receipts. This organization is the lead organization that will fund Community Solutions, Youth Alliance, all the elements for everybody to work together. So this is a collaborative. And, and the Latina Coalition was at those meetings. The, the collaborative asked the Latina Coalition for that phone number because that was already paid, but they decided not to share that with the collaborative because that was gonna go into a dashboard where trained volunteers were gonna, were gonna get. So it's like a, it's not a physical phone, it's a dashboard that you, you can call, you know, that will dispense information to volunteers to answer those phone calls. So they did not wanna be part of that network. So they're at the table, there was discussion about the phone number. So the phone number will not be publicized in the materials, in the training, and the volunteer team that won't be answering those phone calls. So the Latina Coalition was, is part in meeting with the team and they're deciding how they're going to, they, the team decides who's gonna be the lead, who's gonna take on the cost, who's gonna do the branding, who's gonna do the flyers, the social media, who's responsible for the training. And so that's, that was discussed. And there was a lot of questions about, you know, potential confusion. So the number that was funded previously by this council will not be used. It's gonna be funded through the collaborative and that phone number will be provided to Monterey County for the dashboard. And that was by the choice of the Latina Coalition.
Okay, just wanna clarify. I think that number is being currently used and there is plans for it to continue, the, the one that we've already, that we've. So I just wanna clarify that. I think that will be used. Like in terms of what LULAC is, it may not be used, but it will be used in the public. So the, the community already knows about it and they're already utilizing it. So that is my biggest concern, is that there's gonna be confusion in a time when there's already a lot of confusion. So that's just my, my only comment. Okay, so I'm just gonna leave it there. And, and I'm just gonna check with, I'm not sure if it's city clerk or if it's our, a city attorney. I don't believe we have public comment. We already have public comment on consent, so there will not be any more public comments.
You already did.
Okay, so I'm gonna go, I'm just gonna come back to you, Councilmember Resendez, but I just really wanted to be brief. I'm trying to get to everybody one time, if at all possible.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mayor Stevens.
Okay, make a motion.
Thank you. Move to deny.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Can we do a roll call vote?
Hold on just a moment, please. Vice Mayor Pachet?
No.
This is on the motion to deny. So you're voting against the motion to deny?
Oh, no, I, I voted to deny.
Okay. Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
No.
Motion passes 3-2 with Mayor Stevens and Councilmember Morales voting no.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna move on to the next agenda item. A resolution approving a contribution for two years in the amount not to exceed $5,000 per fiscal year 2425 and 2526, United Way of San Vito County, 211. Okay, so any comments on that, on that one?
Mayor, I can provide a brief update if you'd like as well, just to give a little context. So historically, the city has provided a contribution to the United Way for the 211 service. And so a few years ago, we brought that forward to council. In the past, it had been an over the counter approval, basically. And so we brought that to council and there was an approval for funding for the '22, '23 and the '23, '24 year. We did receive an invoice for the '24, '25 year and from that triggered that it had not gone to council. And so we wanted to bring that forward. Technically, the approval was only for those, those two years. So the United Way did operate under that approval. And so we wanted to bring that back for consideration if this is a service that you would want to continue to fund and take it from there. So we just wanted to provide that update. And I believe we have a representative from United Way in the audience, so if you have questions of her as well.
Um, comments? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. Yeah, same sentiment as the last one. However, I know that we have a longstanding relationship with them. I know they provide an excellent service to our community. Again, if we are looking at hiring freezes and asking our staff to cut back, then I think that we have to lead by example and it sends a strong message that we're following the same thing here. So that would be my position and I can't support it. Thank you.
Others?
I struggled with this one as well. I mirror the sentiments of Mr. Resendez. I mean, we're asking city staff and all departments to tighten the belt and make some choices that are gonna lead us to a better fiscal health for the city. I'm challenged by this one.
So my brief comment on this is just simply that I do understand the concerns and I share the concerns of my fellow council members. I do, actually, let me check with our city manager. This is a reduction in what we have given in the past, is that right? Can, can you remind me if I'm remembering what I read correctly?
No. In the past, and forgive me, I believe it was around $2,500 and it went to $5,000 a couple of years ago. So this is the same amount that was approved the time before, just for this current fiscal year and the following fiscal year.
Okay, okay, I wanted to clarify that. So, okay, thank you, thank you so much for that. Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
Move to deny. I'm sorry.
No, public comment was closed, sorry, sorry about that.
Move to deny.
Um, can I get a second?
Second.
A roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Pachet? Councilmember Resendez?
Yes, to deny.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
No.
Motion pa, or sorry, motion fails 2-3 with Mayor Stevens, Councilmember, oh wait, hold on. Councilmember Pachet and Councilmember Morales voting against.
The, the motion to deny failed.
Oh, sorry.
There were two in favor of the motion to deny, three against the motion to deny. The motion to deny has failed.
Thank you, sorry, I was reading the wrong column.
Okay, so then we'll get another, another, would you, would someone like to make another motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Pachet? This is to approve it. Okay. Councilmember Resendez?
No.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
No.
No.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes three, two, with Councilmember Resendes and Councilmember Deanda voting against.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to Council Business, 9.1, San Bernito Street Traffic Calming Study, Alternatives Follow Ups. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, William By, Public Works Director. This item is a follow-up to the presentation that was given on February 4th for the San Bernito Street Traffic Calming. There were some questions during that presentation about the block from South Street to Hawkins and why, and why it wasn't studied. It wasn't studied, it's a transitional block that goes from the one-way traffic on San Bernito in the downtown to two-way traffic after that intersection of San Bernito and South Street. On the east side, the southbound side of the street, there's, there's already a bike lane present there. There's, there's diagonal back end parking there. And there's not a, a warrant analysis isn't required. We don't need a warrant to add bulb outs, which is basically alls we would do at the intersection of Hawkins, excuse me, and San Bernito. South in San Bernito is already a four-way controlled stop, all-way controlled. So what we could do is we could move forward. We did receive an updated proposal from the consultant to study that one block. The amount for that proposal was $17,000 and some change. We could simply not, not go forward with that proposal and do the public outreach, mention to them the reasons why that wasn't studied, and ask the, the public during that outreach if they would like to see bulb outs at that intersection, and then simply add that to the design once we go to design. And that wouldn't cost us anything, just the, the rest of the original task orders to, to do the public outreach. So basically saving us $17,000.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Okay, can we move to public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Jane Dabo Cruz, I believe it is. Ms. Cruz, are you here? Okay, sorry about that.
I'd like to start with San Bernito Street, Fourth Street to Hawkins. The COVID crisis is thankfully behind us, so it is way past time to return San Bernito Street to its former configuration. Remove all the parklets. Return the street parking to original, parallel parking. No bicycle lanes. Activate the electric signals at Fourth and at South and at Fifth to confine them. Continue to have diagonal parking on all side streets, no Zen First only. Consider moving that ridiculous waste of money Hollister sign to an entrance to Hollister rather than at the intersection of Fifth and San Bernito. San Bernito Street is a motor vehicle traffic corridor. Perhaps not like airline highways, the newly designated State Highway 25, which tries ever so relentlessly to mirror, mirror the Daytona 500.
Thank you for your comment.
I think I'm over, right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for your comment, I think you got the gist of it, appreciate it.
Those are all the speakers from this item.
Councilmember Resendes?
Thank you, thank you to the public speaker for coming out here tonight. Thank you, William, I think this is pretty obvious. And then I, I just wanted to, again, thank you because I think you guys did a good job of at least going out there and seeing how you can save us some money and get the same type of white work done. So I would go with your staff recommendation of just reaching out to the public, putting in those non-study items that you spoke about, and then mentioning to them that we were going to be doing that when you do reach out to them. Good job.
Okay, thank you. I, I also, I forgot to mention that we're seeking direction on whether to move forward with the rest of the, the original task order, which is the public outreach and then the, the, the design.
William, if I may, so at the last, the last time we brought this item forward, we were bringing it forward, we had received direction to go out and to, to do this work. We had the estimates, the conceptual designs, and the next step was going to go be public outreach. And so we brought it to you, it's a new council, we wanted to get your input. And so the decision point basically is, it's basically three different decision points. Do you want to proceed forward as recommended by our Public Works Director? Where you go forward, you do the public outreach, you do that component, and continue forward? Do we continue forward with the public outreach and this additional $17,000? And add that, and then go do the public outreach? Or ultimately, you could say, we don't want to do this all together, and that would be the end of that?
Correct, we could, we could stall, we could, we could table this, I, this design, public outreach, the entire thing for traffic calming. For the time being, we, we have the work already that's, that's been done. And that would, could possibly sit for a year or two, or whenever council wanted to move that forward.
I appreciate that update, yeah. I honestly, our number one priority is the safety of the community members here. We've already had somebody get killed at that intersection. I think we have to move forward with the public outreach and keep pushing this, the traffic calming section of that area down, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions on this, Councilmember Pacheco?
You know, I, a lot of high school age kids use these intersections, walk across the street. And, you know, at high school age, you'd think that, you know, they'd have their heads up and kind of, you know, have their wits about them. But as often when I drive around town, I do see when the high school kids are, you know, smart as they are, they're, they got their heads in, you know, in their phones, and they're not really like keeping their head on as well like I normally do when I cross the street. My, my question is, is, is it too late, because I'm just getting into this, to ask if those, to ask the community if those bulges or bumps that you're talking about, if they're, if those are necessary? Can we still ask them if, if, you know, the community, like, are these going to help?
That, that would be the next step. If we were to move forward with the original task order would be the public outreach and community surveys.
Okay, so we can still ask them if they think that those bump outs would be, okay.
Correct.
Because as much as I, I appreciate the high school kids, I do see them with their heads, like, looking at their phones and walking across the street, and it kind of freaks me out.
And if I could just add, Mayor, if I may? So if you were to proceed forward with this, there would be the public outreach, community surveys and meetings, the consultant would develop a traffic calming report. That would come back to council. So after receiving the update at council, the council could then direct staff to have the plans engineered, you know, once there's a final design. So that's the next step, is you would engineer it, so you have actual engineered shovel-ready plans. Once that is done, you would have another decision point of whether you wanted to fund the project. And as, as we mentioned at the last meeting, there's underground work, there's utilities, so it would be an expensive project. However, having a shovel-ready project is a qualifier for grants as well. So it could be something that we could look to solicit state and federal funding and match it with some of our funding that we collect.
Okay, good, thanks for that clarification. Okay, so I'm going to look to the council for a motion, how, how do you want to proceed?
I just have one final question that I would be perfectly happy to do a motion. Do we incur any additional costs to go through with Task Three and Task Four, which is to, you know, effectively get the report after the money that we've already spent, $50,000 or so, and the public outreach? Are we going to incur any additional costs to get this information and to at least get the, the information that we've been, that previous council was seeking regarding the speeding along this road?
Yes, and I was looking for that.
Was that the seventh thing you're talking about?
It's, it's, the final two tasks on the original task order, it would be $37,287.
Okay, so let's go ahead and get a motion. Somebody, somebody like to entertain a motion?
Mayor Stevens, this is just for direction, not a motion.
Oh, we don't, okay, so I think, I'm, so let's just do.
If, if I could just get some clarification?
Go ahead.
If you're going to be approving additional expenditure of funds, I recommend a motion. But I, I, I still am having trouble understanding this, so I just want to make sure, is that correct?
They do have the ability to approve additional funding.
Okay, then I recommend a motion.
If they choose not to and to proceed either forward as, without the additional $17,000 of work, or decided to say, well, you're just going to put the project on hold and stop now, that would not be an additional appropriation.
So if we were to just give direction, then move forward with the work, get the feedback, and then come back?
Yeah, that would all be under the already approved task order that was approved back in August.
So that just requires a thumbs up?
Correct, if you just want them to do community outreach, that's just a thumbs up.
Let's do a thumbs up on that. Okay, so we got that, so then we'll wait to hear back, and then later we may have more direction later.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for that, appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to move on. So we're into 9.2, a resolution accepting the certification of sufficiency for referendum petitions submitted against City of Hollister, City Council Resolution Number 2024-201, Recommended Action, Adopt Resolution. Okay, so let's, do we, do we need a staff, are we going to get a staff report from this?
Mayor Stevens, yes, I have a very brief staff report for this.
Okay, staff report, thank you.
So Jennifer Woodworth, City Clerk. So this is just the next step in the referendum process. And so it simply states that the number of signatures submitted to the city for this referendum were verified by the registrar of voters in San Bernito County, and that there were enough signatures for that referendum to move forward, which is what we'll be discussing in the next item. So 2,313 signatures were required, and the proponents were able to have 2,846 valid signatures. So that's all this item is, is saying the, there, there are sufficient signatures.
Okay, thanks for that staff report. Any questions from the council? Okay, no questions, so can we move to public comment?
There are no public comments submitted for this item.
Okay, so let's entertain a motion.
Move to adopt.
I will second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendes?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. And then let's move on to the next item. This is 9.3, Options Regarding a Referendum Petition Related to Adoption of the 2040 General Plan Update. And may we have a staff report on this one?
Okay, it's me again, so this one is another very brief one, not quite as brief. So since there were enough valid signatures submitted for this referendum petition, then it comes before you to decide what to do next with it. So I do have a brief timeline that is provided here. I won't really go through it. Basically, the city council adopted a resolution, 2024-201, on December 3rd. And then the, the city received notice of that potential referendum. Proponents gathered signatures, they submitted those signatures, and then as we just spoke, they gathered enough valid signatures as verified by the registrar of voters. So what we come to now is the options that are before the city council. The first option is that the city council can take action tonight to rescind Resolution 2024-201. Another option is to put the rescinding of that resolution on a future general election ballot. The next general election is November 3rd, 2026. And then finally, you could do it, that same ballot measure on any special election. The next regularly scheduled statewide special election is not until June 2nd, 2026. However, the city council, if you did want to do a special election, it cannot be any earlier than 88 days from your action to call that special election. So if it was to be called tonight, no earlier than May 30th, 2025. So those are your three options. And then I wanted to give you an idea of what the costs of those different options would be if you decided to put it forward to the voters. A standalone special election will always be your most expensive option. This is due to, for most elections, the cost of the election is split between the various organizations, agencies, special districts, the state, federal. All of those costs are able to be divided amongst them. So that is the printing of ballots, the translation, the poll workers counting all of the ballots and such, such forth. So the cost of a standalone special election can be anywhere between $350,000 and $450,000, according to the registrar of voters. A special election that would be consolidated with a primary election, so that's that June 2nd, 2026 date. Registrar voter says that it could cost between 40 and 50,000. I, in my experience, it's sometimes a little bit higher than that initial estimate because you don't have as many items on the ballot, not as many ballot measures, not as many seats that are up for the voters. And then finally, that next regular municipal election, November 3rd, 2026, again, between 40 and 50,000, this is based on their estimate. The most recent ballot measures on the November 2024 election were around $53,000 each. So give or take, depending on the number of ballot measures and items on that November 3rd, 2026. So those are the options that are before the council. I do want to make sure that the council understands that any of the updates that were made in Resolution 2024-201 would remain suspended until the council takes action. If you decide to put it forward to a future election date, then it would be the prior version that would remain in effect. And so during the suspension period, we would operate under that previously adopted general plan. So, any questions for?
Any questions? Okay, not seeing any questions, so I'm going to ask for a public comment?
Okay, and Mayor Stevens, we currently have 12 speakers, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Our first speaker is Eladiya Nardi, to be followed by Fallon Gregg. Well, Ms. Nardi is going up after Ms. Gregg, it'll be Tom Armbruster. Armbruster.
My name is Eladiya Nardi, and what I wanted to say is that we are confusing voters immensely. The, the last time when we went door to door, people would ask me, didn't we vote on this before? Didn't we vote before? And of course we have. So one more time, we're going to go out and put it before the electorate. And I, I, from what I see, there's no other option. Regardless of what, what the three options are, they all have to be to the elections, doesn't it? Or is there something? Okay, so which one is the one that doesn't have to go through to the electorate?
Option A. Option A.
Okay, so why can't we go with that one? What, what's wrong with it? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Nardi. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Fallon Gregg, to be followed by Tom Armbruster.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens, council members, my name is Fallon Gregg. 3,562 city voters signed the referendum petition well over the required number to qualify. Voters are frustrated and angry that their votes and voices are being ignored. I support the referendum against the former mayor's attempt to circumvent Measure A and expand Hollister's sphere of influence with 3,000 acres of county farmland. The former mayor's 2040 general plan is terrible for Hollister. It would end up costing the city for infrastructure improvements which the city can't afford now. I strongly urge you to listen to the vote of the people. I urge you to vote to uphold the referendum and rescind the former mayor's awful 2040 general plan. By doing this, the city will avoid a costly election, saving the city money. Vote in support of the referendum, it's the right thing to do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Tom Armbruster, Armbruster, followed by Bridget Baumann Thorp.
Hi, I'm Tom. I strongly encourage you to repeal the resolution outright. Handing it back to the voters does two things. You evade, with all respect, you evade responsibility of being truthful to the voters. It would continue to add unnecessary confusion previously employed by the opponents of the referendum. It took three-plus years of concerted effort by, by many people to educate the public. It took a lot of explaining to do, over and over and over again. By such groups as Protect San Bernito, the Guardians, Don't Dump on San Bernito, and, and many other San Bernito County citizens. We went door to door, parking lot to parking lot, face to face, email to email, social media, to social media. Five seconds. By voting for the new city council, the people voted for responsible, intelligent, and imaginative growth. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Bridget Baumann Thorp, to be followed by Carly Robles.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Stevens. I just can't make it any clearer. Please repeal the resolution, rescind Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero point one. I was the one also collecting signatures for the referendum, and I talked to many, many people, and they asked the same questions. We haven't been voted on it? Because they voted for Measure A, and now, and here we have to go out and collect signatures for a referendum that would expand the sphere of influence by three thousand acres. Just to give you an example of what it would look, how big it is, Buena Vista area would be built out all the way to Wright Road, in some areas up to Highway one fifty-six. If you stand up on the hill, you can see the massive development that could be happening there. And I assume just to...
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Baumann Thorpe.
The next speaker is Carly Robles, to be followed by Valerie Harmsen.
Hi. I urge the city council to rescind Mia's terrible referendum twenty forty general plan and to adopt the original twenty forty general plan that had public input and was well thought out. I was out talking to people for a month, and I can honestly say the vast majority of them agree with the new twenty forty general plan, that it is a disaster. People spoke during Measure A and want to say in how our county grows. They were in a way betrayed by the old council when their last day in office, they expanded the sphere of influence by three thousand acres. The people have already voted in the form of Measure A. We do not need to have another election. Please listen to the three thousand five hundred and sixty-two people who signed the referendum and repeal the twenty forty general plan in its entirety. I say three thousand five hundred and sixty-two because that's how many people signed it. And once the elections office got enough votes, they stopped counting.
Thank you, Ms. Robles.
Our next speaker is Valerie Harmsen, to be followed by Robert Harmsen.
Hi. Well, I feel like our city's been backdoored by the old mayor and the council, and that's why they're not here anymore. When you go and you change a general plan, when you know that maybe Measure A was going to pass, this is an insult to the people that live in this county and in this city. And you guys need to repeal this because this is not what the city wants. This is not what these people want. This is not the people in your district want, and you're here because of that. You're here to protect these people in our city. And the idea of putting another three thousand acres into that sphere of influence is ridiculous and totally unnecessary. And you owe it to everybody here in this city to get rid of this and appeal it, and it never should have happened in the first place. Mia Casey did a very bad thing to us.
Thank you, Ms. Harmsen.
The next speaker is Robert Harmsen, to be followed by Bella Rosales.
I think that's your everyday life.
This does feel like an end around. You know, the good thing, the complicated issue, and voters came forward and said, look, we'd like to have a voice. That's a pretty powerful statement, and I consider this effort to, with the sphere of influence, to get around that vote, I just think it's wrong. So I hope that you'll follow the wisdom of the voters and let them proceed with the law as it now stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harmsen.
The next speaker is Bella Rosales, to be followed by John Robles.
Good evening, council. Now that we've seen the presentation on the referendum, there are two choices before the council, to rescind the general plan update or put it up for an election. We've heard our community speak, and the overwhelming majority have pleaded for relief from the amount of growth we've seen here in the city. They've spoken of concern for the loss of agricultural lands and jobs. They've spoken of displaced wildlife and ecosystems, of increasingly strained public services due to the expanding city and growing population, and they've spoken of lost hours stuck in traffic. This general plan update exacerbates each and every one of these problems, and the people have already made it clear that we do not want it to go forward. Please rescind this update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales.
The next speaker is John Robles, to be followed by Catherine Sanchez.
Good evening again. On December third of last year, part of the outgoing city council ratified a general plan which, in which my opinion was equivalent of pile manure. It was crafted to favor entities who do not care about our community at all. It's a horrible, poorly thought-out general plan which does not factor in issues like traffic on Highway twenty-five, schools, fire, and police services. It's for this reason and many others that I do not have time to cite right now that I urge you to rescind the ex-mayor's disastrous general plan and adopt the original general plan, which does not include a horrendous three thousand acre sphere, acre sphere of influence. Keep in mind that three thousand five hundred and sixty-two voters who signed the referendum petition to rescind the disastrous general plan doled out by ex-mayor Casey group of now-removed council, and now-removed council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robles.
The next speaker is Catherine Sanchez, who is followed by Annette Perez.
My name is Catherine Sanchez. I live in District One, and I walked to gather signatures because I thought I had voted and Measure A had passed, and then, no, I couldn't trust the council because it looked like we were going to grow. So I heard what many of the other volunteers heard, didn't we vote on this? But we trust the council to do what is good for the community, and the opposite happened in that December of twenty twenty four. Please vote to rescind the Resolution twenty twenty four dash two oh one. That's all we need, just rescind it and let us see that we can trust the council again to reflect the will of the people of Hollister. We need to slow the growth. I know we're going to grow, but let's slow it down.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
The next speaker is Annette Perez, to be followed by Maureen Nelson.
Hello, council. Thanks for listening to me today. I would just like to encourage you, the city council, to repeal the resolution in its entirety. You talked about budget. Let's save money. Let's not put this to a vote. Let's rescind it. It was a terrible plan put forth at a December meeting when we were all having Christmas and holidays and are not working about that. Mia and her crew put together this terrible plan to put three thousand acres into a sphere of influence, to add this building to an already infrastructure that we cannot support. We already have some approved housing that is already going to be putting a lot of strain. So I say repeal it, forget the vote, remove the plan, come up with a better plan. So do the right thing and repeal it. Let's save that money for the rally. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Maureen Nelson, to be followed by Mary Shaw Corin.
Can we? I don't know how I follow a rally, but here we go.
Hard act. Hard act to follow.
It's hard. Good evening and thank you. Measure A passed. The voters had their rights to vote. They voted for it. It was unanimous. There was no wishy-washy, no question. Was it forty-nine point two percent to forty-nine point three percent? Was it very close? No, it was a clear win. Measure A passed. Then all of a sudden, we get the rug pulled out from underneath us. This isn't democracy. Democracy took its place on that November election. We're looking at traffic. We're looking at infrastructure. I live in the county. No, I do not live in the city, but I live in Santana Ranch. We don't need another three thousand houses. We already have roads that are a disaster. We don't have the infrastructure to support it. Please, let's stick with what the voters stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Next speaker is Mary Shaw Corin.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Okay, thank you for the time. I collected signatures also. I decided to help with this referendum because it really is a way to circumvent Measure A. In fact, when I was collecting signatures, as other speakers have mentioned, many people kept asking, why are we doing this? Why, we already said we don't want development on Fairview, Union, Buena Vista, and San Juan Hollister Road. We don't want to develop there, and yet it's come back. So they felt it was a sneaky way of undermining Measure A. So a lot of voters were very unhappy, and they really wanted to sign, but they could not. The people who lived in Santana Ranch and Ridge Mart really want to sign, people who live in a sphere of influence. So I think you should rescind this really terrible general plan which does not reflect the will of the people. And I think you will be doing a heroic thing. The voters will be really happy if you rescind it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Stevens, those are all of the public speakers for this item. I do want to clarify one thing, that all signatures were verified by the registrar of voters. That was something that was stated differently. They were all verified because the city requested that, so I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. So thank you for all the public comment. Let's, let me check in with my council. What would you like, our council, I shouldn't make it mine, our council? Any other discussion? Does anybody want to entertain a motion? Questions?
Well, I think it's, you know, I feel that, you know, voters and residents have communicated their thoughts and their feelings and needs clearly, I mean, loud and clear. They passed Measure A, which was a slow-growth initiative. They elected three new members to the council, all of which ran on a slow-growth platform. Residents gathered, what, twenty-eight-hundred, thirty-five-hundred-and-sixty-two signatures to repeal that twenty forty general plan that had the three thousand acres of grade-A farmland to be annexed? I mean, California twenty-five is, the balsa is a parking lot. Like, it's, in the morning, it's just impossible. And, you know, we'd almost be up to sort of obstinate or just be downright stubborn and hard-headed not to listen to the people. I feel like we're listening, we can hear you, and I feel like we can hear you loud and clear. I, for one, I don't think that we need to spend another forty thousand, fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand to know what we already know. The people have already spoken. How many different ways do we need to ask? Like, what do you want us to do? I don't think we need it. I feel like we can propose a motion anytime you guys have had your time to speak.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Resendes?
Thank you. So this is a pretty historic moment, and I would like to obviously speak about it. So thank you, Mayor Stevens. I just want to, first of all, thank all of you for coming out here tonight, all of the organizers, all of the public comments. And then I want to point out to my colleagues here, just like with the Biker Rally, not one person spoke against moving forward with repealing this and adopting the referendum as is. I know how much hard work it is to organize and to get out there and to do this at your own time, so thank you all for your service and dedication to our community, to the people that were out there signing this. Thank you. I also appreciate the feedback. We've been very busy up here, doing a lot of work, so it's nice to hear that feedback, that there's still some confusion out there. So that's something that we can work on as well together. When you're creating a policy, I really do believe in, I really do believe in democracy, I really do believe in government, but it has to be equitable. And the people are right. When the general plan was first done by the, not the previous council, but the council before that, it was almost done. And I really do think that process was done equitably. However, it takes just a quick minute to turn that around and have special interests go in there. And in my opinion, there was two people responsible for expanding that sphere of influence, and there was no input from the marginalized community. I believe nobody showed up. They had translators there. There was not enough outreach, and all of a sudden, you had a developer's general plan, not the people's general plan, and that was a complete travesty. Thank you, guys, for holding the elected officials accountable. That was apparent in the last election. And I learned something new recently. You have to hold yourselves accountable, too. Whatever you can do within your own community and your own neighborhood and your own backyard, then do it. Whether it's helping somebody take out the trash, cut the lawn. We are being pressured by Silicon Valley to develop here. The fight's not over. This is not in no way over. It's very confusing for the public. We're up against people with billions of dollars. However, I do believe in the power of the people. I appreciate that you guys went out there. I respect your voice. And yeah, I agree with Councilmember Pacheco. There's no reason to spend extra money on moving forward with this, and I would proudly move forward to adopt the resolution and rescind and repeal the general plan. And on that note, I would like to see, just for the staff to know and the public to know, a new general plan come back ASAP. Por favor. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Resendes. Councilmember Deanda?
Okay. I would just like to say thank you. I echo Councilmember Resendes' sentiments. This is a full-circle moment for me because one of the very few times I spoke at that podium, it was against the development of the four-hundred block. And we have some of the similar faces here that helped organize that as well. And I wanted to say that this is just grassroots community, and there's no, you know, private interest in it whatsoever. It's just us as a whole, what impacts all of us, not just a very few people. Just like, for example, just with the Biker Rally, same thing. The community spoke. Again, voices were not heard. I am for the people, and I'm for my community. I grew up here. I love Hollister. And yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for your work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'm just going to say really quick. There's no other option. We, let's move forward with honoring the will of the petition signers of the referendum, which means repealing. I don't, there is no other choice. We all, we are here because we're representing you. So there's no choice in that matter. And I agree that no need to spend money on an election. This is move on. We're going to get the general plan going again. It's very disturbing to me that, a couple of years ago, I was on the advisory board that was working on the general plan. We had a really good plan in place. It was really, really close to being finalized, and then, in heartbeat, it seemed like things changed when we got a new council, and it was unfortunate. So we will have to go back and pick up some of that work again and redo some things. However, I think this is where we're at, so this is what we're going to do. But will of the people always will supersede anything else, so we will, we must repeal. Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Stevens, I will proudly move to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty four dash two oh one.
No, you're, if you want to repeal, it would be repealing that resolution.
Okay, that was getting to that. Thank you, city attorney.
She's always got our back.
With the direction to repeal the resolution in its entirety. Thank you.
You're going with Option A?
I'll second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
I vote to repeal.
Councilmember Resendes?
Vote to repeal proudly.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
Vote to repeal, please.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. So we're going to move on, back to business again. We're going to move on. Request for direction regarding annexation general planned amendment applications. Can we get the staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Eva Cowley, your Planning Manager with Community Development Department. This item, I'm going to keep it relatively quick, but we just had a decision made on the referendum which repealed the twenty forty general plan. That leaves staff and potential applicants for annexation and general plan amendments, which were placed on pause by the direction of the council at November sixth, twenty twenty-three, for processing and acceptance of applications, with the city now under the two thousand and five general plan until further direction by the council of maybe another update, going back, looking at something else related to the general plan. We do need direction on how to proceed with both applications that are currently submitted and were on pause pending the adoption of the twenty forty general plan, and how to proceed with directing the community members or people who might be interested in submitting an application to staff for an annexation or general plan amendment, because we do have inquiries and people who are hoping staff can give them direct... have inquiries and people who are, are hoping staff can give them direction, and staff is unclear on what direction to give. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Uh, Councilmember Pacheco, do you have a question?
Um, I just feel like there's a, there's quite a bit going on, and, uh, I would like further time to take a look at some of these annexations, possibly like one by one. Um, so I move to continual pause until we can further study each of these, uh, individual annexations and we work on the general plan.
Okay, let me, let me see if there's questions before we move to any kind of a motion and check, and then we still have to do public comment. Um, it, other questions? Okay, so I don't, now that, we don't have any other questions. Do, do you have a specific question on it or nothing? Okay, so can we move to public comment?
Yes, we have one speaker, Victor Gomez.
Okay, Mr. Gomez. Oh, he's on, on Zoom.
Um, hey, everybody. Uh, good, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor Stevens and City Council Members. Uh, my name is Victor Gomez with Pinnacle Strategy. I'm here speaking, uh, to you this evening on behalf of my client, Bill Christopher, with the proposed Hollister Research Campus in North Hollister. Uh, since 2019, we've been working closely with the city on this environmental document for the proposed economic development project. Uh, with the hopes of having the EIR completed nearly two years ago. Our project is dependent on the general plan that you just rescinded because that, because our EIR was working off of that general plan. Uh, and though we don't have a position on your action, and now that we understand it, we are very concerned that the trajectory of our project, uh, is going in the wrong direction. So with that said, I have a question that we would like answered, and that is, now that the general plan has been repealed, um, what are our next steps and how do we proceed, um, as a project moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Heather?
Those are all the public comments for this item.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Um, so let me check in with, um, Councilmember Resendez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Um, yeah, not all development's bad development. First off, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Kelly. But not all development's bad development. There are some projects that we really want to see come to fruition here that are going to help generate tax revenue. If that's really their intentions, then we want to support that. Um, so, but again, like, I'm with Councilmember Pacheco. I think that we have to honor the pause for now. And what I would just stress to staff, please, again, bring back that GP, bring back something that we can adopt. And potentially, if there's any solutions that you or the lobbyists or developers can come up with that are going to be equitable, then I'm all for that, too, if we have to think outside the box. But again, I appreciate your time, and I'm all for the pause. Thanks.
Okay, so I want to just clarify. Um, I, I think we need to do the pause as well. I think we need to do that. Uh, and I agree that we need, we should be considering those projects that have been kind of in the queue for a long time, um, and ask, uh, whether or not there's benefit to the community for each project. Uh, so my question is, maybe this is a question for City Manager, I'm not sure. Um, could we bring those, uh, this back for another, uh, at another meeting to consider some of those options, uh, for this, um, like, do the pause today and then bring the request for annexation at another date? Or how would we, how would we proceed? Basically, I'm kind of want to, I want to sort of ask, answer the, the question that Mr. Gomez posed to us. What do we do now? And I'm kind of asking sort of the same thing, especially because I want to be able to support those projects that provide some benefit, especially really strong benefit to this community.
Eva?
Oh. Were you wanting to? I, I was going to say, I think, I think perhaps there's kind of two different things that we're talking about, maybe. And I think it sounds perhaps like the council actually wants us to continue processing the ones that are in, which, where a lot of them are at is they need to be brought before you to consider. That is what they were placed on pause for, is they were submitted, but then were on pause and have never been brought before you for their initial consideration, or some of them are waiting to be able to be processed and get to the final finish line for you to consider. So I think perhaps we're being directed to kind of work towards bringing those forward to you, the ones that are prepared to come forward to you in the next recent soon-ish timeframe, but, but also.
Just a clarification, Ms. Kelly. Not, not giving direction, I'm asking a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just asking a question. So I'm just wanting to, I want to understand how to be able to do that, do the pause like tonight, and still have some kind of a timeframe to be able to look at the individual projects. So that's my, the question, is that a possibility? How could we do that tonight?
I think, I think my question to you would be, perhaps if we're continuing the pause, we would not be able to process or take in new applications. However, you could give us a timeframe on when to come back with a more detailed discussion about further direction on this matter, on the pause, on bringing back individual projects.
Okay.
And if, if I may, Mayor, and maybe
Sure, sure.
Provide a little clarification. So what I've heard in the earlier item, and I, I think I saw across the board, is the desire to have general plan options come back as quick as possible. So, um, when we did that before, when we had the initial pause, there was a presentation that was given on those items. And so perhaps that could be something that's lumped together when we bring all of those options back and work a presentation like that. So, so you would have your options of how you'd want to proceed forward, and then we could talk about the, the, each of those projects at that time, unless I'm seeing a conflict.
No.
Ms. Kelly is the expert, so I, I would defer to her if she doesn't agree with that. Please, now's your time, but I think that may be your best strategy.
I think that would be fine, and I think my, my final question for direction would be on proposed new applications, of whether we should take those and lump those in with that further discussion so that we're not telling people to wait or wait.
Yeah, so, so again, we're not giving direction, but I, I'm, this, what I'm, my question is really only about those that are in the queue right now. I, I would, me personally, would, would ask that we don't entertain any new ones, at least for now, right? Maybe that may change in, at a later date, once we have our general plan, you know, further along or in place or whatever. But, uh, I'm just referring to the ones that are, I'm, I'm saying they're in queue. That might not be the right technological term for that, but that, but those that, that are pending. Uh, and, um, along that, along those lines is, I'd like to be able to get to that as soon as possible. So presentation on how to proceed with the general plan with some detailed information about the projects that are in the queue, and then, uh, a lot, and as well as no new applications for now, right? That, that will be the pause, right? That, that's the pause. Okay, so that's sort of what I'm thinking. Okay, so I'm going to check in with my fellow council members. Thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up. Okay. Is that good?
Yes, we have direction.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so here, I'm going to check in with the council members. I want to proceed with the next item and then take a break, if you all are okay with that. I know that we've been sitting here for a little while. You might need a break now, but I would like to just move forward with the next item and then take a break, right? Is everyone okay with that? Okay, so let's move on. Um, and thank you all in the chambers for your patience as we're moving through this lengthy, um, agenda. However, I think we're doing this very efficiently and with all of your cooperation, so thank you for that. Okay, so item number nine point five, a resolution approving an agreement with Roadshow Inc. for operational management services for the 2025 Hollister Independence Rally. Recommended action, adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Roadshows Inc. for operational management services. Um, can we get a staff report?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, um, and Mayor Stevens, uh, our city clerk is in the process of, uh, patching Randy Burke in to the, into the meeting. Um, we'll give him a moment.
Okay.
Oh, it looks like he hung up. We'll call him back, so.
Okay, thank you.
He, he was unable to make it. He's actually, uh, in Daytona right now at his Bike Week, which, um, he is there, and depending on the outcome of this evening's, uh, vote. Okay, it looks like Mr. Burke has patched in, so.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
So we appreciate your patience with that, and, and, uh, it's eleven-thirty where Randy's at right now, so we appreciate you, Randy, for, for staying with us. All right, so the item before you is an agreement for operational management services with, uh, Roadshows Inc. As I said, we have Randy Burke with Roadshows on the line. Um, just as a way of background, on January seventh, the city council approved and authorized the rally to be held on July, the July fourth weekend. Um, at our last meeting, the council approved a resolution that authorized the city manager to purchase security services, uh, for the rally through a three-quote process, um, to help expedite and, uh, secure services. And, uh, we're working with Chief Reynoso on that as we speak. Um, the city council, um, also at that meeting provided direction to host the rally on Friday and Saturday. This year, Fourth of July is on a Friday, so to have Friday and Saturday, the fifth, for the official rally. Um, in the past, we have contracted with Roadshows Inc. Uh, the last contract was approved in 2019 through 2024. Um, unfortunately, he, uh, contracted in 2019 for the 2020 rally, and as we all know, the pandemic, uh, hit us shortly thereafter. Uh, between that and other challenges, uh, he was not able to, to host, or to promote the rally in partnership with the city through that contract. Uh, he did provide, uh, previous rally services prior to that. And so, um, we have worked to develop an agreement for Roadshows to serve as the operational manager of the event, with the city playing, uh, serving as host to the event. Um, and we're partnering with, uh, with Roadshows to solicit sponsorships to help offset the event, uh, costs. And so, uh, kind of the model that we have set up is that, uh, for, he, he would receive a management fee, uh, to help, or a consultancy fee of thirty thousand dollars for his efforts. And, uh, he would secure, as part of our agreement, ninety thousand dollars in sponsorship funds, on top of helping to secure all of the vendors, the food and beverage, all of the other concessions. So I think sponsorships is just the sponsorship, sponsorship side of the house. Um, in an effort to incentivize, uh, additional sponsorships, any, for addition, for any additional twenty thousand dollars that, that is secured by Roadshows, uh, he would, that fee would increase by five thousand. So he has some skin in the game to help, uh, increase those sponsorships. I want to point out that any sponsorships that we secure as the city, um, would not count towards that, but we would work in partnership with him. For example, at the, uh, last meeting, I announced that San Benito Foods had, uh, agreed to, to sponsor the event at fifteen thousand dollars, so that would not go towards, towards this. But we do plan to coordinate those efforts so we don't overlap and aren't, you know, aren't at, uh, in conflict with that. Uh, we are estimating a net investment overall in the rally of a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But like I said, uh, with the strong partnership and sponsorships, our goal is to offset as much of those costs as possible. Um, due to the fact that the rally is, uh, in July, um, a majority of those costs incurred are also incurred in the next fiscal, uh, year. And so those will also be included as part of your budget as well. Those will be in, 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 in the budget. So, um, as we plan for expenses, that's the one good thing about it being the Fourth of July, is it's the start of the next fiscal year. Um, I would like to also mention, and that I'm pleased to report, that, uh, through the leadership of Mayor Stevens, uh, the city's been working diligently with Amazon to negotiate not only a partnership, but an investment in the city of Hollister. And as those details are solidified, I'll be happy to provide an update to the council and to the community. And so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank, thank you for that staff report. So any questions?
Well, I, I think it's innovative.
Do you have a question?
Um, yeah, I would just like to.
If you have a comment, can you wait till the discussion part? Do you have a question?
Yeah.
I'm just like, try to run a tight.
Comment, then a question.
Counselor Pacheco, thank you so much for your cooperation. Um, questions? Questions? Okay, no questions, then I'm going to ask for public comment.
Mayor Stevens, we currently have seven speakers. Our first speaker is Miguel Zendejas, to be followed by Robert Parker? Poker? Miguel?
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, I guess I just, I'm kind of happy that we're working and, you know, we're going, moving forward with this. We've been voting on this for years and getting approved and just going through the motions, and I'm just happy that we're, uh, that we're really working through this. So, you know, this, the rally's important to every single one of us, especially us as a biker community. And just for everybody that owns a business here, there's so much traffic coming here, so I just want to thank everybody, uh, that's voted for it. I mean, we voted you guys in for a reason as well, so thank you. We love you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zendejas.
The next speaker is Robert Poker? I don't know. And then Carly Robles.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. Um, my name's Robert Pelker. I've been in this community for almost thirty years, been with the top editors for twenty-five, over twenty-five years. Been a pharmacist in this community for over twenty-five years. And, uh, Randy Burke, I've met him personally. He's a great guy, and I think he'll really do a great job, superb job for you by doing this, this rally. He runs an excellent job up there in Reno. He's been running it for many years. It's a great event, so I think there's a lot of potential here to come about with this whole thing. So we really appreciate your vote for this, uh, resolution with, uh, Roadshows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pelker.
The next speaker is Carly Robles, to be followed by John Robles.
Hi. I just wanted to say that I am, um, definitely in support of the rally and whatever it takes, um, to get it here, I think we should do. I think a lot of people in this community really want it. When I was out there collecting signatures, a lot of people talked about the biker rally, missed it, wanted it. Uh, some people, I told them, it's coming back, and they didn't believe me. I said, I promise you, it's coming back. So I'm really happy that we're, um, working hard to get this here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robles.
The next speaker is John Robles, to be followed by Alyssa Corillo.
Alrighty. I am extremely excited. Uh, this is awesome. Hollister, for Hollister, this is a piece of Americana. This is, you know, this is one of the things that put Hollister on the map. Um, as Mr. Zendejas said earlier, uh, he hit the nail, uh, on the head. Good for small business. Um, it's going to draw attention in a positive manner, and it's nice to see the follow-through. Uh, it's just awesome, so I'm very excited. I'm sure my son and I are going to be there, uh, watching this firsthand, so, uh, thank you. It is awesome. I'm very excited for people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robles.
The next speaker is Alyssa, Alyssa Corillo, followed by Eli Harvey.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here in regards to my concerns for public safety, for not only that of myself, but of my community. Um, I believe with the lack of proper current staffing we have, it's not exactly feasible or safe for our officers to, um, withstand such an event of this magnitude with the foot traffic we have. The amount of sworn officers that we have is at a rate of thirty-two right now for the whole city, and I just don't think that's safe. And I don't think that's justifiable to then sit here and ask your employees, um, to put their safety on the line in terms of protecting the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corillo.
The next speaker is Eli Harvey, to be followed by Annette.
Greetings. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just wanted to, uh, come out here and to say that, um, when it comes to the rally and the safety concerns, I think, um, I work alongside with a lot of, with a lot of officers and definitely want to make sure that they are safe. Um, so the concern for public safety, uh, obviously is there. I know that that's definitely a, a concern for the, um, council. I'm not sure, you know, if you guys are going to, or if you guys have reached out to the There's some major, there's some major issues, and I think that, you know, I'm concerned for them, I want them to be safe. I want to see them every single, every single day. Not saying that, you know, we're praying and hoping that nothing will happen, right? But things do happen, it's just, this is how law enforcement works. So, just here to say that hopefully we guys reach out to all of our police officers that are like out there and the ones that are going to be doing the, the job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
The next speaker is Annette.
I just want to encourage you all to approve this agreement. The voters have spoken. We want a rally. I know it can be safe. I've gone for many years, just, you know, have the safety concerns, but you can meet them. The rally will bring a ton of money into our city. Lots of taxes will be collected. The restaurants will be full, and so will the bars and the hotels. I mean, our city is known for this rally. It puts us on the map, as somebody said earlier. It what makes us unique and special. Everybody knew about Hollister. They need to continue to know about Hollister. Yes, we pay some money, but we're going to bring in a lot of revenue. So I say, let's do what the people want. Let's get this rally here, and we'll all have a great time. And I say, go to Amazon, get them to pay for that firework show. We need it. Thank you, everybody.
Those are all the speakers for this item.
Thank you, Annette. Next speaker.
Those are all the speakers for this item.
Okay. Okay, so I'm closing up the public comments. So now, I will turn it over to my fellow council members. Any comments? Councilor Pacheco, you have a comment? Councilor, Councilor Pacheco.
Well, I'm excited. I agree that the biker rally, I mean, you know, the people want it, right? I want it too. It's definitely part of the fabric of our town. Gives us some character, a little bit of flavor, something fun to do, something fun to look forward to, goes into next year's budget, sounds really good. I think what Dave's talking about, super innovative, right? And having some sponsorships to offset the cost and make it so it's not going to cost us too much money so we can have something fun to do, enjoy each other, enjoy our town, bring people in, remind them of how cool Hollister can be, have some rides, go to some churches, get some bikes blessed, get a burrito or two, and listen to some great live music. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And I too, I, I, just like everyone in here, I want it to be safe. I think a lot of people know New Orleans and Mardi Gras is happening basically as we speak. I think it culminates tomorrow. And, you know, I think we can do it. I think we can do it safely. I, I know I wouldn't want to mess with a biker, that's for sure. You know, for sure. So I, I don't think anyone else would too, but, you know, I hope it can be done safely and not at a very light burden to taxpayers. And if, if there's any more information we can get as to what the strategy might be to get some sponsorships, maybe what we can do, I'd like to potentially just pull all of our efforts, right? Let's comb the streets, let's see what kind of sponsorships we can get out there. Put our, put our heads together, I think we can do great things.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. First and foremost, thank you all for coming out here and speaking for the biker rally, especially the members of the public. Thank you to the Top Hatters. I don't know if I seen you guys here last time, and I was especially pleased to see Bob here. So you guys were here last time, Top Hatters? You guys do so much work for our community. I really appreciate that. From the toy drives that you do, from seeing you, Bob, with your hat with the horns and your bullhorn out there blessing bikes for our community. I know before my family even moved out here, that a big part of the reason that they wanted to come to Hollister was because of the biker blessing that you guys did in the 4th of July, biker rally. So it's a part of our tradition, it's a part of our culture. We're not only going to have the biker rally this year, but we, I am dedicated to getting it on the ballot to ensure that it is legally binding and voted on by the people of Hollister to have it each and every single year after that. I want to extend my gratitude to companies like Amazon and the San Benito Foods, San Benito Foods, for extending the offer to help sponsor and lower the cost of the tax pain citizens here in Hollister. I like what you came up with as far as the sponsorship package and incentivizing our, Mr. Burke, our contractor, to get that. So, Mr. Burke, if you can hear me, are you still there? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Personal challenge, sir, to you, we're going to have a personal challenge between the city of Hollister and Mr. Burke. Let's see who can get the most sponsorships. And let's see who can get that biker rally at a cost neutral to our tax pain citizens, because I think that's real important. Thank you, guys, from the bottom of my heart. I'm glad to see the biker rally, and I have so much faith that this is going to be a safe and a very festive event, and it's going to be very financially beneficial to our local businesses. Thank you, guys, again.
Can I just do, can I just do a quick little clarification to the comment that you made, Councilmember Resendez? We don't have a sponsorship from, from Amazon. We're working on a partnership with them to, for some things that we, that we're going to partner with them on. I just want to be really clear about that. But we will be able to give more information about sponsorships and their partnership with Amazon moving forward in future meetings. I just wanted to be really clear about that.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Deanda, do you have a comment?
Okay. Okay, I'm really excited. I echo Councilman Pacheco's sentiment. So, for me, we're gaining traction here as a city, I believe. Slowing the growth meets having the rally, focusing on small businesses. I think this is a sign, really, that we're going in the right direction. It's a collaborative effort. This is involving everybody. This is what this is about. This is why we're here. So I just want to say that, and I'm with you, and thank you again for your support. Thank you. And thank you to city staff and city manager. You guys rock. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. I'll make a really quick final comment, and then I will entertain a motion. So, I just wanted to let you all know that this is another example of where we really, we really truly want to honor the will of the people. So this is another example of that. And, and I think that with a lot of hard work behind the scenes, because we had essentially, and I'm going to say we, but really it's our city manager and his staff, 50% of the time to pull, to pull this off, right? So, so just a lot, a lot of like kudos to our city manager and to his staff, because it's been, it's taken a lot of hard work behind the scenes to even get to where we're at today. And also, I wanted to say this about, I do not want to discount the comments made earlier from, I think-
They work for the police department.
Individuals from our police department. They put their lives on the line every day, obviously. All police officers do that, right? In an event like this, where there's a lot, a lot of people, then it's, there's extra security concerns for them. So I want us to all appreciate that position that they're in. Part of that requires that we all take personal responsibility for be, like, having a really safe and fun event so that then we can continue to not only support our law enforcement partners, but also continue to have a safe and fun event for our city year in year to come. So that's my, that is my challenge to all of us, that we hold each other accountable and that we make this safe and secure, and that we appreciate our law enforcement partners. Later, we will have more information at other meetings about an actual security plan that we have coming forward. I know our city manager's working behind the scenes with our chief on how to get that together, and, and we will have that in place soon. So, thanks again to everybody's work behind the scenes. Let's move forward with this fun event, and I'm going to entertain a motion from one of my city council members.
I propose we adopt the resolution approving agreement with Roadshows Inc. for operational management services for the 2025 Hollister Independence Rally and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the agreement.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And can I get a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. So I will, I will allow some applause with that, so thank you all. And then I will, I'm going to ask for a quick break. So let's, can we do five minutes and then come back and get back to business? Thank you all for your participation, and we're going to be back in five minutes, everyone.
9.6, a resolution regarding being a welcoming city for immigrants and then recommended action. There's no recommended action, it's just for direction to the city. Okay, so do we have a staff report on this?
So, this is on February 4th, 2025, Councilmember Morales requested an immigration resolution be brought at a future agenda. So, this is meeting that request.
Okay, any comments? So, do we want any discussion or do we want it to say thumbs up?
You need to open it up to the public and it's a resolution to approve.
Oh.
Yeah, because it's a resolution, you'd have to have a motion on the table.
Okay, sorry about that. So, do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay, so any questions or discussion from the committees?
I'm prepared to move to adopt, Madam Mayor.
Okay, can I get a second from someone?
I mean, I second.
Okay, thank you. And then can we get a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And just a quick, since we didn't have much time for discussion, thank you to Councilmember Morales for bringing this forward and for getting the resolution written. I appreciate all the hard work you did behind the scenes on this. Thank you.
Actually, if I may, that was our city attorney and city manager. Thank you so much for the work and there was a lot of documents that were sent your way, so I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. Thank you to all three of you. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item. 9.7, a resolution approving amendments to the City of Hollister's quote "city," council discretionary funds policy. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the item before you tonight is a resolution approving amendments to the city council's discretionary funds policy. Spoke a little bit about that earlier this evening, that the policy was approved a few years ago. And so, as part of the budget strategies, or the quarter two budget report, there was a recommendation that to amend the policy to allow, because how it works is each year that we bring a recommended allocation forward. Council has the authority to approve that, to change it, to basically fund it at a level that they're requesting, as long as it gets voted and approved as part of the budget. What staff had recommended and received direction to bring forward tonight is to not fund the policy if the city's fund balance is below the minimum reserve amount as established in the city's adopted budget and fiscal policy. So, what we would do is as we build the budget, if that reserve amount is not at the 20% level, we would not bring a fund, we would just budget it at zero. So, the policy would be in effect, but we would be budgeting at zero. If we were in a position where the reserve levels were above the policy level, which currently the policy is at 20%, then we would inform you of that and take your direction at that time. Additionally, the city attorney, and if she'd like to add to it, she certainly may, has asked to also add an amendment to the policy that these funds may not be used six months prior to a municipal election and not until the swearing in of any new council members as a result of the reference municipal election. And so, and then there's just a handful of just real small clarity and consistency edits throughout. But the substantive change tonight is the connection to the budget and the reserve policy and the usage six months before the election. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Morales?
It's not a question, it's just, it's information. So, it looks like based on the, based on the budget presentation, it'll be five years before potentially council would be able to get discretionary funds.
It may not be five years, it probably three, but it all depends on how revenues end up playing out and expenses play out. But it could be anywhere from three to five years.
Based on potential projections, it probably is either five years or probably more.
Depending on potential, it could be.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Okay, Councilmember Resendez?
Again, just as a quick reminder, every single discretionary fund was emptied, other than for up here, other than mine, and then the one that was voted against tonight.
Yes, prior to the change of seat for the three members of council, we received requests that basically liquidated the balance. And so, you know, there may be a balance that's left over at the end of the year if a group didn't spend all of it, but the appropriations that were approved was for, to spend the remaining dollars.
And then I would just imagine, city attorney, that's the rationale for coming up with that amendment to the policy, to not spend it before the last six months of the election?
Right. The recommendation was made to avoid any appearance that funds are being expended to support any particular candidate.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm gonna move to public comment. Do we have public comments on this item?
We have no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you for that. So, any further discussion?
I feel like Councilmember Resendez and I are in agreement here. I think $50,000 is way too much. I know that's not what we're voting on right now, but I mean, $5,000 I think is plenty. But $50,000 is just way too much. So, I had moved to adopt the resolution as stated, amending to the city council discretionary funds policy as stated.
Mayor, if I could clarify, that would be an option under the policy. So, once you had met your reserve, if the council was so inclined, they could say $1,000, $5,000, and then we would work that into our budget and bring it back in. So, the policy is very dynamic. It bends based on, or it's shaped on whatever the reserve amount is of the policy of the time. And then you can also allocate it at whatever level you would want once meeting that qualifier. So, the policy doesn't say $50,000, otherwise we'd have to keep amending the policy every time it changed. So, we try to build it in a fluid way so we don't have to keep updating the policy every time you want to change.
Sure, thank you. Oh, yeah. Did we have a motion already?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Okay, I'll call for discussion before we do that.
Okay, can we go back? I'm sorry, we hadn't finished the discussion piece. I had not called for a motion yet. So...
That's right, you can still have discussion, you just have a motion and a second on the table.
Okay, so thank you for that. We have a first and a second, and then so let's just give a little bit of time for discussion and then we'll move to the roll call vote for that motion. Any other discussion? I just want to just make a quick little statement about this. I believe that especially in, especially when we have a discretionary fund that is for individuals, I think there is a perception of some special interests being involved in this. And I think that this is a pretty, it's a good way to build public trust around councils and other leaders. So, I think that this is a good way to move forward. I am really concerned about the level, our reserves level. So, I think this is also a good practice. Once the reserve levels are up, I also think that there can be ways to like change this policy or amend it so that there are some discretionary funds, but I think it does have to kind of match what's happening at that time. I also know that if there are other councils, they can move to amend the policy. So, I think making this move right now is a good thing to do. And then later amendments can be made as needed to the policy with future councils if needed or when we reach our goal of replenishing our reserve funds. So, I'm just gonna say that. And then I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Mayor Stevens, if I can make a comment?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just want to remind my colleagues that this, there is no discretionary fund. There was no discretionary fund. This money is not our money, it's not your money. It belongs to the public, it belongs to them. The fund that we're talking about was a fund for us to complete traffic studies within our districts. That's where it started. So, essentially, somebody says they want to stop sign here. You have to do a traffic study to legally justify that it qualifies for a stop sign. How did it go from that, which it might have been $20,000 at the time, I can't remember, to let's give $25,000 to a nonprofit? How did it go to that, to let's spend all my money before the last meeting I'm here and give it away to, again, some nonprofits that supported them politically? How did it get to that? Because again, slippery slope. We should not have a discretionary fund. We should not have a discretionary fund policy. We need to get rid of it altogether. That is my stance, especially again, moving forward with the financial situation that the city is in. So, I cannot support the motion. I just wanted to make that very clearly. I'm hoping that the majority of my colleagues will not support that and that I can propose a new motion to just rescind the policy. If future council members want to come and do that, they can.
It's called a substitute motion. You can make a substitute motion under Rosenberg's Rules of Order. That motion would be heard first. So, the last motion made is the motion that's heard first and then you work backward if necessary.
Thank you. Then I will propose that we do a substitute motion. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna do it first, that we rescind the discretionary fund altogether. And that would be my motion, if I can get a...
Can I ask a clarifying question about Councilmember Resendez's motion? So, the piece about the reserves then is, becomes a non-issue if we go with that, as well as a piece about anything before or after an election. It becomes a moot point, right? Okay, okay, so thank you for that. Okay, so we have a alternate motion. So, we have a first and a second. And should we get us...
Do you have a second on that substitute motion?
I second.
Okay, so do we vote on both?
No, you vote on the substitute motion first.
Okay, so let's vote on the substitute motion. Can you remind us what the substitute motion was?
Yeah.
Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Just to rescind the discretionary fund policy altogether.
And we got a second from Councilmember Pacheco. So, can we get a roll call vote from our city clerk, please?
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on. So, we're going on to 9.8, a resolution designating a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the League of Cities General Assembly. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, the item before you tonight is to adopt a resolution designating a voting delegate and up to two alternate voting delegates for the League of California Cities Annual General Assembly. This event will be taking place in October, but in the past, we had approved it closer to the event. And so, what we wanted to do is make sure that we get that approved early. So, there's time to plan for that. The appointed delegate plays an important role during the general assembly by representing the city and voting on the various resolutions that come forward during that process. To cast a vote during that, the city must designate a voting delegate and up to two alternate voting delegates, one of whom may vote in the designated voting delegate if the other one is not able to serve in that capacity. A voting delegate may either be an elected or an appointed official. In the past, last year, Councilmember Morales served in that role. And if you wanted to add anything, is how it worked serving in that role?
Yeah, so usually there are resolutions that are brought forth from the California League of Cities, from various subcommittees, and the, it's usually the voting is held the very last day, the very left section of the conference. And usually delegates are, those that are going are then selected to vote on the resolutions. Really simple process.
Anything else? Any other part of the staff report?
Just the last piece, that this is one that you would need to plan on attending the meeting. So, whomever is selected, that would be considered in budget as well as we build the budget out, and that would be in October. So, there are travel costs associated with that, and so we want to just make sure you're aware of that as well. And that's typically a conference that I go to as well as the city manager.
Okay, okay. Councilmember?
Thank you. And then Councilmember Morales, can you remind me again, what do they vote on exactly?
It varies. Sometimes there's nothing to vote on.
Okay.
And sometimes it's a resolution. It could be, it varies on what committees bring forward. Now, this is very different than the policy committees. So, it could be anything.
Okay, thank you. So, you said we can have appointed, like commissioners?
No, so a voting delegate would either be an elected or an appointed official.
Got it. Okay, that threw me for a loop. All right, then I would say, just to make it fair, my recommendation would be the mayor and the vice mayor. Do we have to have another alternate on top of that?
I don't believe you do, but I'm...
Yeah, because it says up to two alternates. So, my recommendation would just be the mayor and the vice mayor, and just leave it at that.
Well, I would be, I would be fine taking that, on that role.
I could be an alternate. So, may I ask Councilwoman Dolores a question?
Yes.
So, Morales, excuse me, I've been tired a little bit. Do you have to be in person to, it has to be in person?
Okay. Okay, yeah, I kind of, anyway, I'm not gonna, let me just, let me just get us back on process. So, do we have any public, let me, I'll check it real quick. I'm just gonna move to public comment. I don't, oh, go ahead. Do you have another comment?
We have no public comments for this.
Okay, no public comment on this. I'm gonna close that. And then, so I can, we can have further discussion, make a motion. Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. And if we can, I would just keep the language like that, mayor and vice mayor, if we can keep it not specific. That would be my recommendation, if that's okay, because we rotate vice mayor.
Well, you have to vote on it every year, so we would need it by the name. We could put by the position and the name, but we have to provide this actually when, when you register. If I don't have the resolution provided to them, they won't, actually won't let them vote. So, this is, that is correct, because it's in the calendar year.
Okay, and can I just get a, did you say this? I thought I heard you say, I'm not sure if I did or not, that when this would, when the term, I guess, would actually start, or when would, when this position, this change in representatives would start?
No, I was just framing it because Councilmember Resendez said mayor and vice mayor. And I was saying that because this is a 2025 event and the position of the vice mayor is voted on annually, that...
Yeah.
We wouldn't keep it fluid. I have to give them more than just mayor and vice mayor.
Okay, and the reason, the reason that I'm asking that is because we just voted on sending Councilmember Morales to the event later this month. So, I want to make sure that that will still happen, because we're so close to that. So, I would say that we start it as soon, like end her term at the end of March, and then the new term for the new, like, I don't know. Two separate things.
These are two separate things.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Is the two individuals, the designated voter and the alternate, go to the annual conference in October.
Okay.
You stay until the very end, Friday at 2:00 p.m.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
And then you vote on what CalCities has put forward.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Two separate events. Okay, great. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
So, then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll just say all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, let's move on. We are now at, we're at item 10-1, committee assignment reports. So, any council members would like to make a report on any ad hoc or standing committees? Councilmember Morales?
Yes, for Integrative Waste Management, we met, and we were not able to approve the budget. We had additional comments and questions, so we're gonna be holding a special meeting to finalize the budget once they come back with additional information. Once that happens, then it will come back to city council for review and approval. And it will go back to each respective jurisdictions for review and approval.
Okay, great, thank you. Other reports? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. The vice mayor and I attended CAG. Thank you, Mayor Stevens. The vice mayor and I attended C O G this previous month, and they gave a very detailed description on the update of Highway one fifty six. Thank you.
Okay, any other reports?
I attended a tourism advisory committee meeting Thursday of last week, and looking to change the name of California Twenty Five Pickles National Monument, five mile section, and looking for ideas to increase tourism and bring money into our accounting. And I think everybody seemed very excited about the bike rally and the prospect of, you know, having people come into town and enjoy our amenities. So definitely was a good opportunity to appreciate and along the descent.
Thank you. And I will just report that the last LAVCO meeting that I attended, we opened up the, the public representative seat and the alternate. So there is opportunities for the others, for those in the public to apply to take on that role, so if you're interested, apply. You go through LAVCO, there's a short, little application process. And we'll be making a decision on that pretty soon. And also, we're looking at a report that's called the Municipal Services Report, that will help to guide some of the decisions as we move forward. And there's, there will be a, a more report on that at our next LAVCO meeting. I just have that short report. Okay, I think that is it. And I'm gonna go on to ten point two, the council's reports. Any, the, sorry. This portion of the agenda is for members of the city council to make brief reports on any activities, or, I'm sorry, on the, on future agenda items, sorry. So we have two requests. One is potential policy regarding communication and shared information for the public, and that is coming from me. And then the other one is Planning Commission's tentative map approval process submitted by Councilmember Resendez. So any, just brief, quick questions, or just a thumbs up on those two future agenda items? Okay, we get five thumbs up, so those will be on future agenda. Thank you. And then we'll move on to the city manager's report.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move into closed session. So I'm gonna ask the city attorney to report on the, to read the items for closes, closed session. Sorry about that.
So item eleven point one, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Agency-designated Representative City Manager David Maroney and Administrative Services Director Casey Astorga. Employee organizations, Service Employees International Union, S E I U, Local five two one, Hollister Firefighters Union, H F F U, Local three three nine five, Hollister Peace Officer Association, H P O A, and unrepresented employees. Eleven point two, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of Section five four nine five six point nine of the Government Code, two cases. Eleven point three, Conference with Real Property Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Property Weller Alley, Hollister, California, nine five zero two three. Agency negotiator David Maroney. City manager, negotiating party, John Sickley Senior, John Sickley Junior, Anthony Brigantino, and John Brigantino, under negotiation terms. Eleven point four, Conference with Real Property Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Property four nine eight Hill Court, Hollister, California, nine five zero two three. Agency negotiator David Maroney. City manager, negotiating party, Todd Dubois, under negotiation terms. And then, I believe as a reminder, you have someone wanting to make public comment on closed session, Mr. Dubois.
Whoops, let me turn on that guy. Thank you. Let me check with the city clerk. We have public com, we have a public comment?
Yes, we have one, Todd Dubois.
Okay.
Who is that? It's Todd Dubois that raised this earlier.
Oh, Todd Dubois, sorry about that. Mr. Dubois, go ahead.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I am sorry I haven't had a chance to meet with you individually. I grew up in Hollister and have been active in the community for sixty years. My father was one of the early founders of Gavoline College, and my mom was a nursery school teacher at the Presbyterian Church. I'm bringing forth, I hope, a perfectly aligned project with your goals for significant downtown investment, infrastructure for senior care, and a new road to Vista Park Hill. And David and I have been talking about it for a few months. And I hope this punches all your punch list items, and that you see that we should go ahead and proceed to negotiation, and hopefully bring something wonderful to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubois.
Those are all the public comments.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the comments, and then we will move into closed session.
Mayor, before you do that, if you're expected to go past ten A M., you need consensus of council to continue going. You might want to do that while you're in open session.
Ten P M.
Sorry. Not ten A M. Thank God.
Ten P M. Okay, thumbs up, if you're okay if we go past the ten o'clock hour. Okay, so then, okay, we'll still have a court.
Yeah, so you can go into closed session.
We'll do our best to get you out here by ten. Okay, okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we're gonna move into closed session.